Morning, we'll call this September thirteenth, twenty twenty one work session to order. We are still virtually virtual due to the ongoing pandemic as we continue to deal with this Delta variant. For commissioners certainly welcome you here this morning and so glad that you're able to be with us. Public comment clerk, do we have any public comment this morning?
Good morning Chairman, we did not have anybody sign up this morning. But I would like to ask if there's anybody that's called in and is holding that would like to speak. And as a reminder, star six will unmute you if you're on your phone and you've muted yourself. Okay Chairman, turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, the commissioners, it's your pleasure. We do have a presentation this morning, actually, we have two. And our first presentation is SLOSS, is a SLOSS update from our own communications director for our SLOSS, Mr. David Good. Mr. David Good, you have the floor for the update.
Thank you Madam Chair, and thank you Board of Commissioners, Madam Subedan and staff, and especially the citizens. Are bringing you the revenue updates for July and work through August. And as the communication team brings up the presentation. I would love for the citizens to know that your tax dollars are definitely going big towards this SLOSS program. So you should be happy and be able to see these changes throughout the county. Next slide, Rick. And as I said, that we're talking about the revenue for July and now projects completed, as you'll see, we had none in August. But thankfully, we did have a beautiful grand opening at seventy-three oh one groupers Lake Road for the, for the new Dithia Springs Senior Center. So that is something that we did do in August. Our next slide please. As you see, the revenue remains strong. It came in in July for two million seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars. That's a little bit over six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of above original projections. For the entirety of the SLOSS up to July, we are at a hundred and sixteen million, one hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight. That's compared to a hundred and five million, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four over with the original projection. And that's a little bit over ten point five million over the original projections. Next slide, Rick. This chart shows you that in the last, I guess you can say the last four months, at least since the fifth year SLOSS began, which was on April first. We are around two point seven million dollars. That's how much we're averaging compared to two point three five million. Really, two point three million at the same time last year. So revenues are really doing good in the fifth year SLOSS. Next slide, Rick. The first thing that you'll see is that we have the fire truck for the twenty twenty fire truck. The cost was four hundred ninety-one thousand. We were expecting delivery by the fifteenth of this month, but because there was some, some things that the fire chief needed to add to this truck for for different purposes, for the safety of it and all the equipment that's added, you'll probably come in near the end of the month, but it probably typically speak to that being questions. For the ambulance, it has been delayed until December twenty twenty-one now just because of issues in getting the parts delivered. But we are expecting to get that at the end of the year. Fire decision number four, the VOC, the Board of Commission did approve the RFQ for architecture engineering. And we're working on that with staff to get that to procurement. Next up, we have SR five at Douglas Boulevard. The board of commissioners, they did approve the task order for whatever on salt, one consult engineering companies, and we should be, you should be seeing some work being done with that pretty soon. We have the streetlights phase one and phase two. As you know, phase one are the I twenty railways as they connect with our roads across the county. That one is mostly done. The only thing we have left is on post road work, post road, we're waiting for a permit from G dot. And that's going to be one that Georgia Power is doing. We just signed approved a memorandum of understanding with G dot utility permit for SR one sixty-six at Casper Road. And that entire project along SR one sixty-six is the last phase two. Phase two actually had a lot of different intersections and a lot of different parts of the railways to put up streetlights. The SR one sixty-six area is the last of that. Next slide please. Next slide, Rick. We have now, we have the Lee Row widening, the budget, the budget that you see, the ten million, that's just on SLOSS funds. And the Board of Commissioner, they approved an agreement with G dot for the fourteen million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's going to be on their side. As well as this SCI eight hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred, they'll be performing CI, CI work, I believe it's already been done up for that one. So the next step is the award of the construction contract. Now we have coming up is Boundary Waters Activity Center. The cost is seven million, three hundred nine, one thousand, three hundred forty-eight. The date for the, for the approval for the elevator is coming up on, I believe it's going to be the twenty, the twentieth. And then at twenty-first is when the fire marshal should have one hundred percent completion. And the target date by the contractor is at the end of the month, end of September. When it comes to bill off at Fair Play, we actually have had a CO done for both buildings at a cost together of one point five million dollars. And actually, this past weekend, they did have games played at Fair Play. So right now, the citizens are enjoying on the Fair Play concession as it was in use. The Deer Lake Gym Roof Replacement, that's for one hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred, a hundred thousand of that is coming from SLOSS. Time the contractor has ordered materials and expected to start on October first. Next slide, Rick. And that is it. And I would like to thank Madam Chair for her great write-up on the SLOSS projects in the Shepherd Hill News and Views and the Villa Rick and News and Views back in August. And we'll open up for questions. Then we have Terry Gable here to answer any questions. Thank you. I turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Good. And by the way, happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Any questions on the Board of Commissioners or our Communications Director, Mr. Good?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, David and Terry. A couple of questions and thank you for the presentation. First, I want to say to, to staff and to our contractors and those who provide oversight for the SLOSS. It's been a success. It's been an absolute success. Taxpayers, our citizens are finally experiencing their tax dollars on a daily basis. And every now and then, we have to step back and look at like, okay, but look at the work that's been done. I know sometimes we get caught up in the weeds and stuff, but every now and then, you gotta look at the work that was done. It's fantastic. I mean, citizens can see it. When you think about lights, it's things, people may, they may marginalize that, well, some. But others are like, okay, now our county is something we've become proud of. That we, we as the civil servants and electors, we should be proud of the service delivered that we're providing. That like, no, this, and we're, we're being faithful over those dollars that, that were presented. I appreciate this forum, which obviously consistently we've shared and been transparent about where those dollars are gone. And while, while it may be long, it matters, right? It's strategic, it's intentional. And again, one more time, the citizen can see, okay, I actually can see it. Sometimes the spend, as we call it, gets, it becomes internal mostly. And citizens really can't appreciate it and they get removed from their government. Even though there may be some internal things that are being optimized and cleaned up, every now and then, they want to see something like, okay, but what's in it for me? And they can get, be selfish. It's their tax dollars. And so every now and then, I have to give acknowledgement for the work that's been done. So thank you for that. Let's have to acknowledge that good work. You can see it, we're coming to the end of this SLOSS. Obviously, what, what, David, we're about what, six months, six months plus one? With the bond will be paid off in the fifth year of April of twenty twenty-two. Which is, which is solid, rolling. You know, we're coming in under budget. We've got some excess in essence, which brings me as a perfect segue. David, go back and I just got two questions now, you to my peers. As relates to the excess, remind me where we are to date again. Did you say ten million? Can you clarify?
Yes, ten point five million, a little bit over ten point five million.
All right.
And I want the citizens to realize that's, now it'd be seventy-two point twenty-six percent of that goes to Douglas County. The rest of that percentage goes to the cities. That's within Douglas County.
Well, that's my question. All right. So roughly about seven million is some change comes to the colony proper less, you know, it is spread for our respective cities. So it has, and this is a broad question, don't answer if you don't know, is where is the plan for, for the excess? Now, I'm going to reemphasize my single view of everything. They really shouldn't take this long. But I'd like to know, where is the reforecast of the SLOSS? And I plan to bring at least the transportation director, Valentin, put, put that on our agenda tomorrow. To, to bring up where are we at, right? So if you're telling me that we're this far along, we've got this amount of excess, that means you've known how much you've spent so far. We have a pre-existing list, right? Things on the list, things that were added to the list, whatever. Where do we stand? Right? I mean, think about, that's ten million, guys. At least seven million to us. Right? And it's, it's, you gotta be faithful, but it just can't sit out there. And this is important. I need, I need the new leadership to hear this. One thing I really resented back when, when I came in office was back in two thousand and two. They had excess money laying over. Right? It wasn't till we paid off the two thousand and nine bond, we started building that football field out there. And down the world, like, okay, y'all got money sitting here? I mean, you have pot, Madam Chair, you remember when you first came on, they got pockets of money just sitting here. And you're re-upping for a new SLOSS and you ain't spent what you currently got. Y'all need to hear that. Right? So you, you need to double time on that. I appreciate the efforts. But I'm also, I've got to advocate on behalf of the citizens, like, okay, I get you want to re-up. You got seven million in excess? Where's your programming regarding that? Right? There needs to be some attention. So I believe that I'll respectfully ask my peers who are chairmen of each of those SLOSS categories, perhaps look at your list, maybe help staff. They seem to be stuck for some reason and giving us what we need. And I think obviously, we have the authority within each of our categories to reshape that. But it's time for us to recalibrate that. Okay, the bond's about to be paid off. Are you going to go to the citizens next year for referendum and you ain't, you, seven million? Come on, guys. We don't want to be sloppable over this. I mean, I mean, let's not let up at the end. In other words, we're doing so well, so well, but this one thing, finish it. Right? Well, you don't give it back? You give it back? You always have that option, right? Right? So I don't, don't, don't take that excess for granted, right? We didn't plan for it. Obviously, you know, obviously, the morphing drip from Congress obviously has helped this. We know people staying home, we get all that. So it was unexpected upside for those who can hear, unexpected upside, got it. But you gotta be in the moment to get your minds around it. So you've got a dedicated team there. Obviously, the list is long. We're always talking about, we got ten dollars of need and one dollar, but okay, well, you got three extra dollars, which, which, seven extra dollars, what you gonna do with it? Right? Knock the list down. So that, that was the first thing. And the last thing I want to bring up, you guys get my point. Hold on. Hold on. No, no, don't, don't respond. I just want to make a point. It's okay. It's not for yours to defend. I'm just making a point. Like, I need y'all to hear this. And to my board, I mean, obviously, we're looking to staff to do this work. We're always talking about people, who does what? Well, they own this, right? So they, they need to be coming to us. I mean, I shouldn't have to roll up my sleeve and do a spreadsheet. But I will, because I know if we get behind on this thing, and now we got a shotgun this, and we don't have any incomers system, that, that's just not good. So I just want to make the point, I gotta keep going, Dave, because you know, want to make room for everybody else. My last point is more specific to District Two, the Activity Center. It sounds like it's, it's moving. No problem with the date. Sounds like the, the elevator's the last checkpoint that you guys are getting. So I just want to confirm for the record that we do anticipate that it will be completed by the end of what, September? And perhaps sometime in October, perhaps we'll have a ribbon cutting. Is that what y'all are estimating at this point, or is it still thirty days beyond that date?
All right, because I would, I would like to have, you know, any ribbon cutting to be thirty days after the building is, is complete. It's supposed to be completed by the end of September, after the fire marshal approves on the twenty-first, if all goes according to plan with that. They were looking at a ribbon cutting sometime in October.
All right. Make, make sure you, you run that up through the chairman of parks to write. Just make sure we're all on the same page. But whenever you guys call it, that'll be fine. That's all I need right now. Again, I don't want to go alone. Madam Chair, thank you for the floor. I yield back.
Any other questions from the board or comments or remarks? I, I do see our county administrator hand, county administrator, you want to add or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to reassure the board and the public that we, the SLOSS reforecast that we presented at the retreat was going to be refined in committee. And so each of the committees will be looking at the percentage of the projection that we think is going to be in excess of the original. And bringing recommendations back to this board for approval. But, but this issue, since this, the question was asked, I just wanted to remind you and let you know that this is a work in progress. Thank you. I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, County Administrator. Any other Board of Commissioners, do you have any remarks? If you don't, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Communications Director David Good. You look like you were trying to say something earlier. I want to make sure I give you the opportunity to, I want to make sure, respect the moment and give you an opportunity to speak.
I just saw County Administrator's hand up, so I knew that she might want to respond to what we're discussing. So I was just going to give her that opportunity, but thank you for the recognition.
Okay, thank you. All right. Board of Commissioners, certainly, I got out of the gate a little early this, at the beginning of our meeting and did not acknowledge your presence. And certainly for the purposes of the record, and I'll just verify for you, because you verified prior to us coming, going live this morning. We do have with us this morning, our vice chairman of, and District Two Commissioner Kelly Robinson. Also, we have our District Three Commissioner, Tarynia Carthen on the line with us. We do have our District One Commissioner, Henry Mitchell III. And then also, we have District Four Commissioner Anne Jones Skyder, and then myself. So we do have a quorum. So I apologize for that, Board of Commissioners, that is my dad's birthday, so I'm just, I'm on a different path this morning, thinking about his potential. If he had a little, he would have been eighty-nine years old today. All right, Board of Commissioners, we have another, our second presentation is Town Green. About Town Green, and we have Marsha Hampton here from Douglasville City, and she's our city manager. Are you on the line, Ms. Hampton?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, you have the floor and good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the Board of Commissioners, for this opportunity to be able to present to you. And thank you, Ms. Subedan, for giving me an opportunity. I will speak today on the Town Green, but I'll give a little bit of an overview, and I think my presentation is very timely. I hadn't no idea about Commissioner Robinson's comments nor Mr. Good's presentation. But I will talk to you a little bit about SLOSS, because every project that I have, that I will present before you is funded in whole or in part by our SLOSS program. And just so you know how we operate on our SLOSS program and actually projects throughout the city. Each year since Mayor Robinson, who I believe is, is part of this meeting, as well as some of our city council members are here as well. That they set, they set ten to fifteen goals each year that staff is in charge of completing. And those ten to fifteen goals are either set forth by operational needs for the city, community initiated projects, or they're part of one of the seventeen functional plans that we have for the city relating to internal operations, external operations, and future goals for the city. Next slide, please, Rick. Just to kind of remind everyone, our portion of the SLOSS is an estimated thirty-eight million dollars. We bonded out twenty million dollars in the beginning of the SLOSS program, because we had several shovel-ready projects. And those included a huge amount in transportation, which forty-five percent of our SLOSS program goes to transportation. The photo that you see in front of you is a Mill Village project. Mill Village is a small park that's near a church and near the, near the Mill Village. And the reason why this project is important is because it's a catalytic project that's adjacent to the former Old Mill, which the city owns. It's part of our downtown master plan, and all of our plans are listed on the city's website. And it was one of those areas that we felt was important to create an anchor for the east side of downtown. So the park was completed, the park was completed for a little over half a million dollars, and that was paid for and funded wholly by the SLOSS program. Next slide. Our next part that you're going to see as a part of this is willing workers. We're currently under construction for willing workers. Years ago, a small group, the willing workers. The park was originally known as Keith Park, for some of you who've been around for a while. The community came to the city about expanding the park. So originally, there were basketball goals, goals and courts near Mill Village Park, and we're relocating those to Mill Village. The importance of this park is because this is going to become a more expansive park and a trailhead for our trail system that eventually will connect the trails along the new Highway ninety-two route that will lead you to Paulding County and eventually Silver Comet Trail, as well as the trail system on the north side, on the south side, I should say, that will eventually lead to Sweetwater. So we're funding a portion of the trail system via our SLOSS program through transportation. And we're hoping if we have another SLOSS and the voters entrust us in that we will include the entire trail system as part of the new SLOSS program for twenty twenty-two. And as you can see, that park is an estimated two million dollars, and we should complete it over the next couple of months. Next slide. The final part, you'll see, we do have a municipal election this year. We have a GEO bond referendum. On, this is an estimated one point five million that we've completed for design out of our SLOSS program. What you'll see and the voters will see on the GEO bond referendum is the twenty-five million dollar GEO bond to construct and renovate Jesse Davis Park. It will include a zero-entry pool, a splash pad, a senior facility, an expanded gym, and expanding, expanded parking. The reason this is important is because now that Highway ninety-two has been relocated, this will serve as the north anchor for downtown and create a connectivity into downtown that we didn't really have before on the north side. It will be our north anchor park, so we're hopeful that the voters will consider that GEO bond to allow for us to do the necessary renovations for Jesse Davis Park and to make certain that we are able to expand that area on the north side. Next slide. Town Green, which is listed on your, on your agenda, the reason this is important is because over the past couple of years, we've reached out to you all, inclusive of for the property that the Town Green is going to sit on for purchase of the jail property. All of this is inclusive in our downtown master plan. This is our anchor development for downtown. So the projects that I've mentioned to you before are kind of the exterior corners to be able to connect everything. You all, the Board of Commissioners, are responsible for several different pieces of property in downtown. So over time throughout the years, we have reached out to you and we'll continue to reach out to you, because this is part of what we want to do as far as cleaning up the downtown area and making certain that we really truly have a livable, workable and entertainment area in the downtown area. The project is an estimated fifteen million dollars. It had gone out, it has already gone out to bid. We've received those bids. Staff is evaluating those. The portion of the cleanup for the property was paid for via general fund. Our design was paid for via SLOSS, and the entire construction will be paid for via revenue bonds. The purchase of the bridge that connects the fire station administration building and the property we will be using, that will become an entertainment space. Individuals will be able to host events in that area. The tower itself will actually have a rooftop area that you will be able to look over the Town Green. We are in the due diligence phase with a private developer, Mill Creek, that's done a significant amount of development in the Atlanta area to incorporate ten thousand square feet of retail, ten thousand square feet of other restaurant capacity, as well as three hundred and fifty residential units, additional parking, and the city itself will be responsible for the Town Green portion in the amphitheater. So that is our, our key iconic project. I know that you all, from the Board of Commissioners, you all actually have a property near and adjacent. So I would just say, as you think about your plans and the things that you want to do, I think that this would be a key catalytic project as you develop your goals moving forward for the future. Next slide, please. I mean, just kind of finally, just to kind of give you an idea of when I say cleanup and make certain that we're being responsible for the downtown area and making certain that it's livable, viable, and that it's a place that individuals want to grow. We are, we understand that the downtown area is the core of Douglas County, so we want to make certain that we're doing our part. Club Drive was a former location for our maintenance and sanitation location. We have moved what I would consider the utilitarian portion of our operation, sanitation and transportation, to an area near Cedar Mountain Road. That was paid for via the, the funds that we collect for sanitation funds. We're repurposing this facility for our parks maintenance facility. We didn't really have a true maintenance facility, but this will be a, a center location that will allow us to be able to service all of our parks, considering all of the renovation that we plan on doing. And this, again, was paid for via SLOSS. Next slide. And then finally, this facility on the corner of Courthouse Square West and Church Street. You all remember, some of you have been around for a while. This used to be the former police, the police admin building. We used to also have detectives in that location as well. We did a complete renovation. So I would say you all should take a look at it, go see the building. We're very proud of it. This, again, is a part of us cleaning up our own act, making certain that as we solicit and encourage private development in the downtown, we want to make certain that we're taking care of our facilities as well. And again, the total cost for this project, it was paid for a portion of it via sanitation funds, the general fund, as well as SLOSS. So at this point in our SLOSS program, we have completely spent the twenty million dollars that we bonded out. We're on what you would consider pay goes. So as the proceeds come in, we're putting that toward some renovations, transportation, and a various other projects that we have listed in the plans that we have. Next slide. And then finally, I just want to say, particularly for the citizens, to just understand, we at the city of Douglasville are about long-range planning. So any plan that I've referenced, whether it be our Parks Master Plan, which all of our parks are listed in there. They are ten to fifteen-year plans. We do long-range fiscal planning as well. So we typically know going in how we're going to fund, what that looks like. And so it's almost in a sense a plug and play. And then, and a key part of the planning for us is community buy-in. We want to make certain that before we go in to do anything, that we have community buy-in, and that planning process allows for us to do that. So we appreciate the partnership with the Board of Commissioners that we've had, particularly from a staff standpoint. And I think I speak on behalf of the elected officials that we appreciate that as well, because when we've reached out to you all, whether it be to say, hey, we want to buy this piece of property, this is part of where we want to go, you all have been very receptive, receptive to that. A project that I know we've reached out for you all, we are currently looking and in the phase of soliciting for phase two of our downtown conference center, which includes a hotel. And then you, some of the citizens may also have seen that we have an RFP out for a new city hall, because we know that that's where we want to be in the next five years, is that we've completely outgrown where we are. So that is the next steps to figuring out where in the downtown area we should go. So I thought, as I talk about the Town Green, just to kind of give you an idea of how it all fits in to everything that we're doing. But I, again, appreciate the opportunity to be able to present to you all, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about anything that I presented to you today.
Any questions for the board? Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Manager. How are you?
Um, well, Commissioner, how are you?
Wonderful, wonderful. It's always good to, to hear you, and we appreciate that. I don't think you've been before the Board of Commissioners in quite, what, what, what ages, right? And so I-
Actually, you know what? It is my first time, Commissioner.
It's your first, it is my- Official capacity, all right.
An official capacity, yes, sir.
Well, we appreciate you here. We appreciate what you do for the city, being one of the leaders that really makes things happen and stuff. So thank you for that. An excellent presentation. So I'll, I'll get right to it. To your point, you know, I'm proud of what I, I've seen the city evolve. It's dormancy, you guys, under you guys' leadership, Madam Mary, you have, it's awakened. It's moving, you can see it, and I'm excited. Obviously, y'all are about a year or- Um, and I'm excited. Um, obviously y'all are about a year or so ahead of us as relates to moving forward to our, in other words, we've outgrown our current footprint uh and how we uh where we deliver services from. So um thank you for that leadership and showing the way. Um, that being said, um, y- you're right, um the old jail, uh I remember when we built the new jail and um that old jail used to just sit there. And this is even pre-y'all's administration. I used to always contact that, well, why are we in the city? We need to get out downtown. Right? We're, we're in the way. I know the county has evolved where the seating count was just one little intimate circle. Remember back when I came on board? Um, district two used to be downtown. Jail was built in district two. Where I had all of downtown up to the railroad. Right? And so I, I, so I recognized sort of uh how it evolved and I had a, a certain vested interest in, in how things played out over time. So I'm glad you guys have, um, you know, taken us up on getting rid of that asset because it was one of those like, okay, we're, why are we even downtown? We've got this big old space out here called the county and why are we so doubled up on each other downtown? And you guys really needed that space. So if there's some other assets that you're looking for, I mean, I'm open to it. Because again, we, 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 you have to we don't need to be in the middle of that way, be in the middle of your way. Um, and I, I'm speaking to my, my peers, um that if you talk about cooperation, not co-opa uh competition, I think it's key. Uh, it's one Douglas in essence, right? Uh, but the city has its own character area, very different than the county. It works well together. And I'm glad to see that the retail space and the things that you, I mean, you guys are really doing. It's like, okay, now we talking. There you go. So I'm proud of that effort. I got one question for you. So, um transportation. So tell me this. So I got lost somewhere around McDonald's and stuff when I was driving the other day, like, and I, I was arguing with my Uber driver. Um, is there any other changes to the configuration where you cut off downtown ninety-two? Tell, tell me about where that is. Cause I, I get asked that all the time with the citizens. I thought at one time y'all were gonna close downtown, that immediate area for walkable, livable. Can you speak to that character area for us? Just to, for us to clarify what it is?
Yes, sir. So, um, you all may have seen that, um, if you are coming from Paulding County and you're headed to uh downtown Douglasville, you, you have two options. Uh, you can take, which is the new route that takes you uh to I twenty quicker. Or you can continue on, which is Old Dallas Highway, which takes you into the core of downtown. Um, currently, right now, the Hamilton Street Crossing is closed. That was an agreement that was made between the Georgia Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern uh to allow for the funding uh for highway ninety-two. However, the MacCarley Street Crossing, which is directly across from Mitchell Appliance is being upgraded with a signalized crossing as well as uh pedestrian access. Unfortunately, it's not open. The new one is not open as of yet because there's been a delay in the ordering of the arm uh that will come down for the train. So I do believe the estimated timeframe on that new crossing opening uh will be in November. So that's what I'm being told. The area near um McDonald's and um Douglas uh basically Hospital Drive, there will be a service road that extends from Chick-fil-A back towards Hospital Drive. So where that area in front of CBS is closed off, the reason that's closed off, it's closed off for construction. It'll take about three to four months for that to be completed. But once that's completed, that area will open up. We'll tell you that we do have a um LCI and ARC funding that we're putting toward uh the area of Fairburn Road between Hospital Drive and Highway seventy-eight to upgrade that to a more pedestrian friendly uh type of street. Because now that will become your, because if you're not, when you get off I twenty headed to Douglasville, headed north, nine times out of ten, if you're headed to Paulding County, you will take the new route. But once the road is completed, if you're headed to downtown, we wanna make certain that individuals have um a very nice greeting into downtown so they can make the choice of going to Hospital Drive or they can continue to head south uh or north, I should say, on Fairburn Road. We're looking at tightening the street, looking at putting in pedestrian bike lanes. And again, all of those plans are accessible under our transportation heading on our city's website.
That's awesome. All right. Very good. So my, my last question, I have to yield the floor. I've got two questions. So the last one is um, so to the citizens, when we really, I guess this is back in two thousand seventeen, when madam chair first took took the helm and we went to New York, we, this SPOSS, um, the current SPOSS was um based on the county's credit. We entered into a relationship with the city, which we would share, um obviously those proceeds. I think it was forty-five million and twenty-five million was the original amount. We, we bonded collectively about seventy million and the rest was pay go. Madam manager, you just, um, I wanna make sure I understood. So, right. So we're riding on the house um here pretty soon. You already into it and we will be soon riding, um obviously pay go. Are you aware of the excess which is above and beyond what we originally planned back in two thousand and seventeen?
Um, yeah, yes, sir. And, and we, we have planned for that. Um, Ms. Huber Dan has uh been providing uh the current um uh new estimates. So we have those. We've been making our projections as well. Um, we have, I, I will just say, we, we have been so fortunate for the SPOSS and, and I really do hope that the citizens um would entrust us again for a new SPOSS. Um, our biggest areas where the SPOSS has become critical and where we can use those excess funds are in public safety and transportation. Um, the SPOSS program for the city of Douglasville, um if we didn't have it, we really would not have a true capital program. It equates to about four mills for the city of Douglasville, which is critical because in public safety, that allows us to buy all of our uh police vehicles. So anytime there's access, there's always a vehicle needed. And anytime there's access, there's always a road that needs to be repaved. So we're very, very thankful and grateful for that opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, for those comments, I have to yield the floor. Madam Chair, I yield back.
I thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Robinson. Any other questions for?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, this is to Marcia. Is she?
Yes, I am. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is something that Commissioner Robinson alluded to about us being in y'all's way. Do y'all prefer the county complexes to be within the city limits? In order to um help your businesses?
I, I would just say from a philosophical standpoint, you know, from a citizen, you know, they, they wanna just have access to their locations. Um, Commissioner Goddard, I, I would respectfully not wanna answer that because I don't wanna answer for the citizens. I think that, you know, maybe you know, the, the best way is, you know, where, where are the citizens needing to have access to services? I can speak for the, from the city's behalf, for us, it is critical for us to have services in the core of town. Uh, we have heard and we know from our citizens where they want us to be. So when we look for city hall, um is the reason why, or even the hotel, uh we've heard about that. We know we'll come knocking and say, hey, if there's an opportunity uh with property from the board of commissioners, we're gonna come asking because that is where they want their city services. But I think it would be unfair for me to answer um for the, for the camp, for the county.
Uh, the reason I brought it up was because when we were talking about the location of the new courthouse, it was concern from the city that we were moving out of the downtown area because of the restaurants and things like that that need the support. But uh I was just wondering is it, you know, um, how you feel now? Is it the same now or before? But if you don't wanna answer, that's fine. I was just asking.
Well, no, what I can do is I know that some of um the city's elected officials are on board. I would just ask them to reach out to you cause I'm pretty certain they hear more from the citizens than I do. Um, so I think if, if, um, I know, madam mayor, if you're on, I think I saw, um uh council member Estes, if you all would reach out to Commissioner Goddard, um, I would appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Goddard. Any other remarks, board of commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-huh, Commissioner Carthian.
Good morning, Ms. Hampton. Thank you so much for coming on this morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna put on two hats this morning. I am a citizen of Douglasville. And so, uh, and I'm proud of my city and my, and my city councilman, Coach Adams. I appreciate him and my mayor. And um, I'm just excited about what you guys are doing, right? You're leveraging every tool that you have in the toolbox to make sure we have such a great city. Uh, when I heard that you're doing a geo bond, twenty-five million dollars to invest down there, you're utilizing the good debt in order to bring us things that we've been asking for. And I've been here twenty-one years. So I'm just excited as a citizen to go to the ballot and, and check. You know, the affirmative. I'll just say that, right? Cause I don't wanna sway anybody else. Oh. But uh, uh, and, and you know, what, what you're doing with the parks and, and all of that really matters. Cause that's where we as citizens um see our dollars and that's how we experience it. And so I just wanted to say kudos to the entire city council and to you for leveraging all the tools in the toolbox to bring us as citizens into the twenty-first century because it does matter. And so, um, I'm also excited to hear, you know, all of the uh, the good things that are coming about from the SPOSS, how you're utilizing the SPOSS, how you're matching it with your general fund dollars, how you're managing your physical, um, you know, assets and, and all of that. So I'm just excited. Any, I, you know, I will just say anything that we can do as citizens and as the board of commissioners to continue you guys, to push you you know, in a positive direction so that the city can grow. Because the bottom line and the realization is if you do good, we do good, right? And if we do good as a county, you do good as a city. And it, it, it truly is a win-win for both of us. So I think that's the synergy that I hope we continue to have as we go through um county government. Um, my only other question to you is, what's going on with the library? I didn't hear anything about the library.
Well, and, and so I, hey, this is what I will say and, and encourage, um, you know, with the town green amphitheater project, of course, you all know that is in the back door of the downtown library.
Yeah.
Own property there. So, you know, I would encourage conversation. Um, the public health facility is there, that, that could be an awesome connection. Um, on the other side of the street from that location is West Pines. The city has put a tremendous amount of money in West Pines. We've done excellent this year for golfing. Of course, COVID has, I think, awakened a new sport for some people or, or got people out of the house. So
Y'all got my husband there almost every day.
Yes, ma'am. So I think, you know, if, if you all, we are willing and happy to partner on that area. If you all wanna start those conversations, I think it is very, very timely and a huge opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, uh Commissioner Carthian, for those inspiring words. I see our, uh any other uh questions from the boards or remarks? Okay, I see our madam mayor has her hand up. Madam mayor, you have the floor. You, your hand is up. I wanna acknowledge you as well.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Chair, Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones. I just uh wanted to appreciate you all having the uh a forum for us to present this morning. Thank you so much, board of commissioners, for your collaboration and your partnership. It is a pleasure to govern with you all. Thank you, city manager, for doing such an excellent job that you always do. Um, I just wanted to talk to, to respond to Commissioner Jones, Anne Jones-Gyder's question about um services in the city and the county. The city is in the county. Uh, we're Douglasville, Douglas County. We're Douglas County as well. So whatever services are there that the citizens want, we're happy that the county, that you're there with us. Um, we just wanna provide services to the citizens. That's what I hear. But in terms of us building the downtown to make connectivity, which the, the downtown, of course, is the heartbeat for the community, any community, um, we just had some, some areas where we needed to move the chess pieces around um with buildings that you owned in the city. So it is, it's your buildings, it's the county buildings. And if you all, um, we would love to work with you. But we are definitely um optimistic in that we continue to work together. We appreciate you all being very amenable to selling us the old jail and any other uh properties that we have talked to you about. You've been very helpful. So we appreciate that. We just, we're trying to connect those seventeen projects together that the city manager talked about earlier in the presentation. And have helped our SPOSS dollars to continue to go. And we thank the citizens for a phenomenal um response to SPOSS. So that's all I wanted to say. We're trying to expand, as Commissioner Carthian said, with entertainment as well as services and eatery and all of that to make full service in life more comprehensive in the city and the county. Um, Miss Douglasville, Douglas County. That's all I want to say. Thank you so much, uh Commissioner Jones.
Thank you so much, uh, madam mayor. Any other remarks from the board or you have any remarks out just close by saying? You have the floor.
Yeah, cause I'm sure you get the last word. Uh, good morning, madam mayor. I just wanna say hello to you and it's always good to, to be in your grace. I, I, you know, again, yeah, look where we are. We're, we're thinking what, three to five years out, ten years. The decisions that the, these two leadership groups will make, well, obviously it'll, it'll transcend my tenure in essence. But it's gonna last for the next twenty, twenty-five years. Right? The decisions we make today are gonna catapult us to a whole nother level. And so while we're evolving, I mean, we're actively, we, we, we're just not, it's just, it, it's intentional. Right? And this is the first time I've ever seen it, that to your point, to cooperation, um, the coexistence. Uh, but again, what you, what you don't wanna do is impose. Right? And I think that's important. I mean, if you think about the seven thousand businesses that are within the total county footprint and is a subset of that within the city. You know, the, the county has three cities it has to support. Uh, you have um communities that have their own character areas and you're trying to spread it out, right? You, you're trying to where, where, where should things be? And it's, I mean, it's, it's just, I'm, I find it delightful just watching how it's being shaped. Right? You know, where things should be placed, what's in the best interest and stuff. And again, we're growing up. Um, everything is not concentrated in the city of Atlanta, right? You have Buckhead, you have Midtown, you, you have expanded areas in which things are, are spread out. Um, and I, I just wanna show, at least from my perspective, that uh the city, it does matter. It does matter. But yet the county had, it's a separate jurisdiction. Right? And I appreciate Marcia being as savvy as she is. Don't answer that question. Very good. You stay out that. Uh, because again, at the end of the day, it's like, okay, well, they've got their own character area. Where do you think their citizens should go? And while they're mutual, no, the city is very distinctive. It has its own tax base. Right? So it, this sort of a, you know, there should be, it should be reciprocal, but at the same point, be respectful. Um, you know, the city has, what, we have what, do what, twenty-eight, you guys are twenty-eight, thirty percent of our population of the overall county's population. You have a footprint geographically that's within that. There's enough room for everybody to spread out and, and, and begin to develop and stuff. So again, I, I, it's important that I, I wouldn't wanna encroach upon you. I wanna be there to celebrate you. Uh, support whatever you need to be, to be, to be that cheerleader for, for the whole county, to be that city, to be that downtown, absolutely. But it, but no way would I would ever wanna make it a conditional that I would tie you, have some type of string attached that, that would um encumber or prohibit your growth in your future. So I, I, I just encourage you to keep going, keep doing what you guys are doing. And we're very proud. Keep leading the way. Again, we're about a year behind you, but we're coming. I just wanted to share that, madam chair. I just had to acknowledge the mayor's presence. I yield the floor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other uh remarks from the board? Okay, with that being said, I will close out by saying that I'm just so excited about both the cities, uh both Gillico and also the city of Douglasville and the county. We've made tremendous progress with our SPOSS. We have uh outperformed ourselves. We have set standards where others would be judged. This partnership has been stellar and I hope and pray the citizens will allow us to do it again in twenty twenty-two as we present. Because I'm telling you that we have uh, and I love football, so we've made a lot of rushing yards and, and, and a lot of, and we have the proof in the pudding, as our vice chairman said today. We're just not talking about it. We're being about it. You see the progress throughout the entire county and the cities, all over as you drive uh despite our situation with the pandemic. I do wanna say that today, I believe, uh, I heard uh city manager when you came in, you mentioned uh that there's a hotel that you all are planning to build. And I'm not sure if there was a special request of the board of commissioners. I, I appreciate the, the presentation. It was very delightful. But I wanna always be direct with my board. I wanna see, you know, we talked about a, a parking space. Can you share with us about the parking uh lot? And then also discuss any solutions you have for uh the board of commissioners in terms of just making some uh temporary changes to our model that we have downtown or our parking situation for our staff. And if, I believe they just, it would just be fair if they could hear that this morning.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so we are, are looking, we're working with a hotel developer that's developed um hotels um in both uh Noonan and other places uh in the metro. It, it's that they develop Hilton and Marriott brands. I'm not able at liberty to tell you which one of those um that would be coming, but I can tell you it would be a Hilton or Marriott pro- um project. Um, Al can also tell you that their interest, because this is the second phase of the conference center. Years ago, when we first started the conference center, a hotel was always supposed to be a component um of the project. They want to be very close. So that would, the closest um property would be uh that we would have access to, that we can minimize the cost um of the project would be where the former uh police precinct was located on the corner of Bowden and Church Street. Now, many may not know, but we only own the On the corner of Bowden and Church Street. Now, many may not know, but we only own the building. Uh, the county government owns the entire parking lot. So if we're going to utilize that space. Uh, we would have to have access to that parking lot. Um, you all do have some government vehicles that are parked there. Uh, but we've taken a look at what we can possibly do and share parking in the parking deck. And there's a tremendous amount of parking available. Um, either on the, uh, third level and then for vehicles that would not be able to fit in the deck. We do have a space that's to the rear near the loading dock of the conference center where we park, um, trucks such as bucket trucks and others. That as a part of any purchase and sale agreement, we would be willing to, um, to share in that. Um, the parking deck, uh, it's, it's not always full. It's, it's free parking, um, but we would dedicate those spaces, uh, to you all. I did have our Public Services Director Greg Roberts reach out to, um, one of your staff, uh, I believe James Worthington, to make certain. That they talk through things that maybe I'm not aware of because they're typically boots on the ground. But we are prepared to provide dedicated parking, uh, for those vehicles so that if, um, you were to provide that property to us, you would not be out. Um, uh, the available parking that's needed.
Thank you so much, uh, City Manager. All right, Board of Commissioners, you heard her deliberation and a que. Okay, all right, sounds like we don't have any questions and certainly, oh, County Administrator, I see your hand.
Yes, Madam Chair. Actually, we do have parking solutions worked out. James Worthington actually has a diagram. And we were going to share that with you, um, as we talk more about the acquisition in executive session today.
All right. Well, thank you. Manager Hampton for coming in. Thank you so much, County Administrator, for just breaking me quickly about what our plans are. And it was a delightful presentation. Progress. Thank you. All right, Board of Commissioners, can you hear me? All of a sudden my cameras, I mean, my computer's giving me some type of message. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
You can't? Okay, I just want to make. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to the next. Minutes for tomorrow. I ask if you could just take the opportunity to review your minutes and, uh, we will approve accordingly. Uh, next we have a proclamation. We just have number three proclaiming September 22nd, 2021 is National American Business Women's Day. In Douglas County and that would, uh, this proclamation will be rendered by our own, uh, Commissioner Carthens of District Three. We're going to move on to tab number four, which is a public hearing. We have Title Six Program Plan for Connect Douglas Transit Services. And we have our Director Valentin. Could you bring us up to speed?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, we will have the, uh, the public hearing tomorrow. Uh, for, for the board to consider adoption of the Title Six Plan. Title Six is, uh, a title. Under the 1964 Civil Rights Act that essentially guides the, uh, programs. Within the county for federal compliance, uh, to ensure that there's no discrimination regarding, uh, race. Color or national origin. Each entity within the county that receives, uh, federal funding. Has to abide by these regulations. We have to convey this information to the public, uh, that, uh, that there are certain protections. Uh, as it relates to access to the services that the county provides and, um. Uh, that is, uh, what the Title Six Plan is for. It is typically on a three-year cycle. Uh, that the plan is adopted and then periodically there are reports that are, uh, sent to the Federal Transit Administration from the county. Uh, essentially documenting how the county is in compliance with Title Six. Uh, so, uh, tomorrow will be yet another opportunity for the public to have input. Into the program, ask any questions and then, uh, uh, the, the, uh, plan itself will be. Uh, ready for the board to consider adoption tomorrow.
Madam Chair, you still out there? Are we still here, guys?
Yeah, we're on, um.
Sorry, she is muted.
Yeah, I'm not sure if she realizes she's muted.
It's on a minute. Is she frozen or muted?
Muted. I, and we'll, uh, I'll check.
All right. So in the meantime, respectfully, you'll the floor to me just currently. Um, and so to full Board of Commissioners, are there any questions, um, that you guys like to propose to Director Valentin regarding this matter?
Vice Chair, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you fine.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, we'll just, again, you'll catch Madam Chair. So that being said, um, I'm going to ask one question. Uh, take a liberty until she gets back. Director Valentin.
Yes, sir.
All right, so this is an annual process that we have to go through? Is that accurate?
That the plan itself is adopted every three years, but, um, annually, we provide an update. To the Federal Transit Administration as it relates to Connect Douglas Program.
Man, again, it's just established as, and it, it has a direct tie to our funding for non-compliance?
That is correct. It is a requirement, uh, uh, for the federal funding that we comply with Title Six. And that we document that compliance and also that we have public outreach to let the public know that, that they are entitled to certain protections. Uh, such as, uh, making sure that the programs are accessible to them, that they're able to take advantage. Of whatever services the county provides without regard to any, uh, impediments that they may have. Um, as it relates to Connect Douglas, certainly, um, access to the, to the buses. It is done, uh, through lift, chairlifts to provide access to, um. Persons with disabilities and the like. Um, the services, um, and programs are also. Uh, the information is conveyed, uh, in, in, in addition to English, to, in Spanish. Uh, to, so make sure that, that, uh, uh, they have the, the capability of availing themselves of those services. So, uh, essentially, it, it, not only as it relates to transit, but any program. That the county engages in, um, we have to be in compliance and we are. Uh, but we have to document and periodically go out to the public to make sure that they have the opportunity to. Uh, have any, any input that they may desire. If there's a, a complaint, for example, there is a complaint procedure. Within the plan that we, that the board would, would be adopting to avail the public of, of that opportunity. To register any concerns they may have.
I got you. Then my final question is that when you talk about outreach itself, how are we facilitating that now? Is that through the collaborative firm? Is it inherent in just sort of materials that we provide? Like, can you give us a framework for that? When you said we do outreach, how, how do we codify it? How we, what receipts or evidence do we have?
Yes, we, we do it in, in several ways. Certainly, uh, there are postings, uh, throughout the facility at the transportation center. Uh, that indicate, uh, that these protections are available to the public. We also post the same notices on the, on the website, uh, so that the public is aware. Of, uh, of the program and, and the compliance. And the collaborative for, a firm has also been engaged in furthering that effort by doing public outreach. Uh, you know, to, to make sure that the public has yet another opportunity to voice any concerns, provide any input. We have as part of the, this particular, uh, public hearing, uh, scheduled for tomorrow, published the notice in the newspaper. Uh, a couple of different times, uh, notifying the public that, that it is coming, that, that they will have the opportunity to provide. Uh, any input they may desire.
Thank you, Miguel. Uh, any other questions for my peers? Okay, Director Valentin, thank you. Um, is Madam Chair back?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, okay.
I was in cyberspace. Thank you.
No problem.
We have my, um, actual laptop as a backup. Now I have ISN here working on it. All right, we're going to move on to our next item, uh, Board of Commissioners. And thank you so much, Director Valentin. Uh, for buying me some time. And thank you so much, uh, Vice Chairman Robinson. We're going to move to County Administrator Business. County Administrator, do you have business this morning? I do see you have tab number five, which is COVID vaccine incentive update. You have the floor, County Administrator, super the air.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have quite a bit of business this morning. Um, and I have exciting news. So I'm gonna, um, if it's okay, is it possible for me to add an item ahead of the vaccine update?
Absolutely. Get right to it. I love, we love exciting news. This board, we, we're full of excitement. So.
Well, I'm proud to announce that we have applied for a $1.2 million grant. For, uh, federal grant for an aerial ladder truck. And I'm pleased to let you know that our grant has been approved by the, um, Department of Homeland Security. So that will be, um, $1,090,909.9. Um, the county will be required to match it by 109, um, and $9.91. And I would like permission to put that on the agenda tomorrow for your approval. Um, so that we can get back to FEMA and let them know that we are appreciative of the grant and we would like to accept it.
I concur. Madam Chair?
Anything else? Any other comments?
No, I'm, well, any comments or remarks from the board regarding this exciting announcement?
I concur. This is, uh, District Four.
Okay, any other? Okay. Well, congratulations. It's very exciting to hear that because I know we kind of rolled this one to the Board of Commissioners. On a, on a, on a moment's notice, really, it was. And if my memory serves me correctly, I'd just like to thank the board for approving the opportunity for the, uh, application process to go forth. You may not remember, but it was a couple of months ago. It was just last minute through it on the agenda. You all allowed it to go through. So we, we, I'm thankful. And also the fire EMS committees thankful and the county administrators thankful. This is, this is huge news for us. So.
Madam Chair?
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Administrator. Again, this, this is a, a great win, not necessarily a quick one, but it's, it's a deliberate, great win. Um, it's something that we've always talked about, having a focus on grants, leveraging our capital stack, right? And it's having somebody dedicated to that role. So obviously I'm segueing and obviously, you know, framing it that I know that you're down that path. I know the board is behind, um, a focused effort on grants. Um, you know, putting ideology a, a, aside. Whether or not you want to have federal grant ties or not, it's an important liquidity, just like our, our, our mayor just stated, Madam Mayor and, and Madam Mayor. Is that, you know, you, our, our size county and city, we, we have little, little, little capital. We're all playing with, with about a nickel. Right? And so we really don't have, um, our checking account cannot hold paying for houses and cars. We, we have to use another funding source. So, um, beyond just another tax on top of the people, um, it's some, sometimes you can leverage that with what we call. Um, sources like this with federal grants or state grants. And so this is key. All right, so that takes pressure off of, um, um, obviously having other sources. It, it now allows you to take that 1.2 million dollars. That we might have need, we, we probably did need this fire truck. Uh, but now you've got this funding source that allows us to pay what, at least 90, 10, we could pay what, 10%? Um, we can leverage the rest, right? So thank you for that. I had to drive home that point. Like, now we're cooking. Now we got to focus and we're able to deliver because we, we've been, and while we get grants, there's so many grants that are available right now. Uh, a lot of it is just, you, you, you can't be diluting your effort. Either you're going to go get them or you're not, right? You, you can't play with them because they're competitive. You got to focus. You got to have the technical experts and stuff. So again, job well done. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, I guess y'all will park it wherever it needs to be parked, wherever it's best used. Um, and so I don't know what a ladder truck would be used for. I'm sure it's not getting cats out trees. Is it ladder track as well for big buildings or, or big houses? What, what is a ladder truck for?
Multi-story. Um, I think this is going to be a hundred-foot ladder. So this is for multi-story buildings. Ideally, a county our size, we should have a minimum of five. Um, right now we have three. So this puts us, and, and some of the ones that we have are beyond their useful life. So this puts us in a really good position. Um, and the match will be funded from SLOSS, from the EMS fire section of the SLOSS.
Sounds good. Sounds awesome. Congratulations to you, Chief and, and Madam Chair. I yield the floor. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, yeah, Vice Chair. And, uh, if, if you will, uh, County Administrator, I know you're. Coming forward, I believe it has it. To it. And you just, if he's on the line, just let him share his excitement to you as well. I know he shared it with you, but we're excited.
I think you broke up, Madam Chair. You're asking for the fire chief.
Allow him to say just a few words. I know he's, he said, this is huge. I believe that's the only word he said is huge for him.
He's, he's on. Go ahead, chief.
Oh, thank you to the citizens. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, County Administrator, uh, Board of Commissioners. We're just so excited to be able to contribute to our citizens and, uh, we can't do it without you. Uh, we all miss together and just thank everyone. We're just excited. Can't wait for that truck to roll in so we can, uh, do some exciting things for our citizens. And help ISO as well. So I'll yield the floor back. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, chief. All right, uh, County Administrator, have a floor again. Okay.
Guyder's hand is up.
Yeah, permission to guide us to your hand.
Yes, uh, and I just wanted to inject the, the fact that our ladder truck was destroyed on our 20. By a, a tractor trailer not, uh, too long ago. So this is going to be, this is a big deal to replace that. And, um, uh, free up some of the splash funds. So thank you.
You are so welcome. All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. Uh, County Administrator, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I wanted to give you an update and also solicit your support. Um, on the vaccine, COVID vaccine incentive for employees that you, um, approved. I think it was last meeting. We already have 450 employees that have signed on. Um, and of course, now we're really encouraging those who have not been vaccinated to take advantage of this. Um, limited opportunity for an incentive, but most definitely, um, get the vaccine. You know, trying to incentivize and encourage, um, getting the vaccine so that we can achieve herd immunity in the county. Um, tagging on to that, we have an onsite vaccine clinic here tomorrow. Um, between, um, I think it's 10 and 4:30 in Citizens Hall. So no excuses, anybody in the courthouse, anybody who's a county employee can come by, get their first shot, second shot. Um, right here on site. And so we just want to make sure that it is easy access. Um, no cost to the employee. We prefer if you bring your health card, but if you don't have it handy, we're not going to turn anybody away. Um, on the third thing I wanted to, um, ask the board, you know, we are proceeding with September Saturday in person. And we are emphasizing public safety. We are partnering with the Cobb Douglas, um, Public Health. And we would like to offer a vaccine incentive to the public. Um, not inconsistent with what some of our surrounding counties have done. We've talked to them. They've given us some advice on, um, how to make it successful and not fall into pitfalls that they had. Um, but we would like to do gift cards of $100 for the first 100 people. Um, this September, the first week of September Saturday, which is, um, this Saturday, the 18th. And then 200 on the second September Saturday event. Um, of course, our target is, um, Douglas County residents. We are encouraging you. Um, as of this morning, we have achieved 40% of fully vaccinated individuals. In the, um, in the county, which is behind the state and behind our partner, um, Cobb County. So we would like to really see that increase, especially encouraging people to make sure they get the second shot. Um, because we know that one dose alone is helpful, but not, um, not entirely. Giving you the maximum amount of available protection. And so we would like to ask the board for support for that. That would equate to about thirty thousand dollars. And we're partnering, as I said, with Douglas Cobb Health Department. And we would like to put that on the agenda for your approval tomorrow if we have a consensus. And then the last thing I want, well, two last things. One is the the thousand dollar hazard pay that you approved last meeting. Employees will be able to collect that today. I did send out an email to all leadership this morning with the instructions. This is federal funding, so it's important that we follow very specifically their rules and we get a signature on every person that receives that funding. And lastly, I wanted to let you know that the executive team met last Friday for eight hours in retreat. And we worked hard on several items, not to, not the least of which is change management. We did a SWOT analysis that expounded on the SWOT analysis that was done as part of the strategic planning initiative. And we, we really talked about how to work cohesively as a team to move the, to move the county forward. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to lead and in supporting us in our efforts to gain the, the some of the cohesiveness and some of the skills that we need to effectively serve the community. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, County Administrator. So then, with that being said, Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the update? Commissioner Carpen, I see you. You all won't see me, excuse me, Commissioner Carpen, but for the remainder, right now my camera is completely out, but I can't flip to my laptop, but rather than cause any disruption. My voice, I hope is just enough for the moment. So you have the floor, Commissioner Carpen.
Thank you. Madam Subba Dan.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I am excited to hear that we are offering incentives to the public as well as we have the employees. Because we do want to get our numbers up as much as possible. I just have a couple of questions for you. Is there a sign up link or some type of way to manage this? And if, and I heard you say this is for Douglas County, Douglasville citizens. Is there something that people need to bring in order to show proof of that? How will we manage this? But I'm excited that we're trying to do it. So if you could just expound on that for me.
Sure. Well, we, we first want to make sure we have your approval before we send out a link. And the idea is we would send that out tomorrow. Anybody who pre-registered, the Health Department will collect their information and make sure they're Douglas County residents. And of course, we would ask them to bring that when they come, which would be a driver's license or an ID or something else that identifies their address as being here in Douglas County. And so the, the Health Department will be helping to manage that for us. And once we have your approval, we'll go ahead and, and send something out, promote it on social media. And our website and, and the usual venues to try to get the word out.
Wonderful. So that, that kind of helps me in determining, you know, if, if I want to support this. And then my second question to you is, where are the funds for this coming from? I heard you say thirty thousand dollars. How are we appropriating for this effort?
So my proposal would be that it come from the Public Health CARES Act funding that you had put aside. We do still have funding in that bucket. Which was appropriated earlier this year. I think you did that in January before I got here.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. And I just want to piggyback one second on the fire trucks. I couldn't get off mute to but I, is this the effort that Chief Joe Lovett asked us to approve when he had identified like a grant writer or someone to, to this is that one?
That's, yes, that's the one.
It's so awesome. You know, I, I, I am like in awe of, you know, I'm, I'm not going to pump him up, but Chief Joe Lovett is doing an amazing job in getting us funds and resources and recruiting people. I, I am just, I am overwhelmed and just, I love it. I love it. Because if we as a government don't reach out to, to get those federal dollars and to get those other resources and to get grants, we can't meet the need. And I sat on the fire EMS committee and I know how hard the, the, the fire and EMS staff work and to have the tools necessary, right? Not to have trucks that don't fully meet the, the demand is was concerning. So the fact that he came in here and hit the ground running, and I think this is probably like his second or third grant that he's gotten in just a short time that he has been here, is amazing. So I just want to challenge all of our departments to, to, you know, and especially the BOC. We got to get a grant team on board. This is just a small snippet of what could be done, but I just want to implore us as an entire BOC, put the resources behind getting a grants team. Two people to come in and fill out those get those data points in, manage grants that come in. It's only gonna help us as citizens and taxpayers and this Board of Commissioner to meet the needs of the entire public. So kudos to you, Chief Joe Lovett, and kudos to you, Madam Subba Dan, for, for pushing us and allowing us to see the importance of having certain team members in the BOC suite. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carpen.
Madam Chair.
Uh huh. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the
Yeah, I had a quick question, just, just as a point of clarity. For employees regarding the, the thousand dollar check, is that net thousand dollars or is it taxable? Explain what that means. Was it? Can you clarify that, Madam Administrator, please?
Certainly, I made it a point that it would be net. So each employee actually gets a check for a thousand dollars. And that's why it took a little bit longer because finance had to work through grossing that up. And that's why the amount was, was higher than, you know, a thousand times the number of full-time and part-time employees. And so it is a net. Every employee should get a check for a thousand or five hundred if they're full-time or part-time. And this question has been asked, and so I'll just answer it here. Everybody who was full-time or part-time on the payroll on the night that you approved this initiative will be included. Individuals who left a week before or two weeks before or individuals who got added a week or two after are not included. This is for everybody who was on the payroll on the date that you all approved this initiative.
Excellent. That was my next question. You nailed it. I have no other questions. I just wanted to bring clarity to those two points. The amount and the effect of who. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So I just have one question for you, County Administrator. I know you said you're waiting. You're not gonna do anything until the board approve that. I heard you when you mentioned you said this, this Saturday, a hundred dollars for those who are vaccinated. Then next Saturday, two hundred. So you know, I would be more, can you explain it? Because I said, if that's the case, I wouldn't come into
No, no, no. So this week is the first one hundred. Still a hundred dollars. And, and then on the twenty-fifth, it would be a hundred dollars for two hundred, the first two hundred people. And so
I hear you. Okay, good.
Especially because we're on a short timeframe. We know that in the twenty-fifth will give us more opportunities to reach more people. But we didn't want to delay. We feel like I'm trying to get the organization to be nimble. And so even though it is quick between Tuesday, when you approve it and Saturday, I think we have to learn the art of being nimble and engaging our community and bringing people to the table. Not everything has to wait two to three weeks to get done.
Oh, thank you. I, I feel better now. Someone else was thinking along the same lines as me. They said, great question. They were thinking the same because that's, well, I'm coming with second. First one, but no, it's one hundred dollars. You just send one hundred people, the first one hundred people on this coming Saturday. And then our second Saturday for the event, it'll be the first two hundred people come, we'll give them a hundred dollars. There we go. All right. Sounds good. That you answered my question. Sounds, there's some exciting things coming down the pipe and certainly I'm still encouraging and I'm, I'm hoping our citizens will be engaged and motivated to come out and and certainly take this vaccine as we try to establish herd immunity. Thank you so much, County Administrator. Any constitutional officers or elected officials on the line this morning that would like to, if you had any remarks, I would wanted to just bring some, a matter to the Board of Commissioners' attention. This is the time. If there's not, we're gonna move on to our business item, tab number six. We have tab number six, authorization to approve an employment agreement with Tyler White as an assistant public defender for state court and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Our public defendant director, Monica Miles, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Oh, good.
Great. So this is, hopefully it'll be real simple. This is a request to approve an employment contract with Tyler White as an attorney, assistant public defender. He will be replacing Jarvis Williams who left in July. And so it's budget neutral, no impact, just to replace an employee left. Asking for, Commissioners, for you guys to approve.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Okay. We have the floor, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Public Defender. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So while I have no objections to the replacement, I, I do have a, a point of clarity. So the public defender, now we're, we're post or somewhat post, we're coming back from the pandemic. And we're getting back to business as usual, not that you weren't already there. As relates to staffing, you know, in this rush, how, how are you keeping up with this? You know, first, how many employees do you currently have that are actually have to defend, you know, constitutional rights of individuals that? Can you talk to us a little bit about that? And what, you know, you're replacing one person, but what does that mean? I mean, are you down? Are you, have you found people? What, what's going on?
Okay, certainly. To start with, we have a staff of twenty-four. There are fourteen attorneys. When we're fully staffed, we have fourteen attorneys in our office that represent, you know, individuals. So, and yes, I mean, we were full, when we were back up, we never closed. Our office was open the entire time. So because people were still getting arrested, they were coming into the courthouse. They come to our office. They were applying for attorneys. We were having to meet with them. Court was, was being in business every single week. So we were always here. So we're getting back to it. And hopefully, we can't wait for the day when we're in court in person as opposed to being on WebEx, because it's really, it's made it very difficult to, to get our clients sort of prepared for court when we have to make sure they understand how to log on to the computer, log on to the court and be prepared and to, you know, have the appropriate demeanor. We are not fully staffed right now. This will get us back to being fully staffed with this, with this hire Tyler for our attorneys. And we are also interviewing for a receptionist position because it is kind of hard to keep. We seem to have lost several people throughout the last year and a half. I think there's a shortage of public defenders. I've had several other counties call me to ask what we pay our, our conflict attorneys because they're all several other counties are having a hard time because a lot of the attorneys right now just don't want to do public defender work. So for the upcoming budget request, I have asked for some additional staff, support staff, because the attorneys really need help. I don't know if I'm answering too many questions or going on too much. You asked me a little bit. So is that sort of what you're asking for?
Yeah, no, that, that was great. No, no, that, that was great. And yes, I look forward to the Constitution. I always try to give the citizens context though, right? And so again, this is a replacement. And, and to that point, and just one final question, because I usually only take two. Which is, all right, so here you are, the public defender. Are you the public defender for to all the courts? Like, how does, how, how, how does that work? I mean, this is for the citizen. I know you'll come before us next month, but that's just the board. This is a chance to help explain what is, what the public defender, who you're representing people in what, Superior Court, State Court? I mean, I mean, how does it work? Family Court?
Certainly. Yes, sir. We represent anyone who's charged with a criminal offense in Superior Court, which are all felonies. It could be felony shoplifting up to murder. Any, any, anything that's a felony. We also represent individuals who are accused or charged with offenses in state court, which can be a traffic offense, could be a DUI, could be a misdemeanor, shoplifting, family battery, you know, assault, you know, multiple, multitude of offenses. So we represent, that's what we do. Family Court is civil. It's not a criminal. We, this Constitution provides individuals who are charged with crime to be afforded counsel. So that's why we are here, based on the Constitution and the law. So yes, any, and, and as you are aware, I'm sure there's court every day, either in state court, Superior Court. So we're always here to cover that.
It just seems unfair that you seem to be outgunned by the prosecution, the solicitor and the DA. You know, I've always had that conversation. I always advocate on your side, like now how you can, they outnumber you four to one. How do you keep up with that? How, how, and then you're saying that you can't attract me. I mean, they've got Constitution, right? I mean, how do you do it? How, how do you prepare these individuals that they should have representation when you're outgunned? You know, three to four to one as relates to obviously the DA's, you know, obviously team and the solicitors. How, how does that work? Is it imbalanced or?
Well, I feel like we are outgunned and it is imbalanced and it's sort of always kind of been that way, not just in Douglas County, but it's that way statewide. It's that way in the country. But that being said, because I mean, we're public defenders, there's always been this sort of tough on crime mantra that's gone on for years and years and years, as I'm sure you're aware. So the public's always supported law enforcement and prosecution. But to answer your question, we fortunately in our office, we've been able to retain folks who have a lot of experience. So we have numerous attorneys in this office that have twenty plus years of experience. And then a handful that have twelve and fifteen. So if we can get folks trained who are passionate, skill counts for a lot. You know, it's just retaining, it's getting the younger attorneys or I say newer attorneys to come in for state court. A lot of times it's just the work is so hard. They just, they get, they get burned out and they want to leave. So we do the best we can. But yes, are we outgunned? And we are outgunned in that sense. And it's not fair. Because we handle, our office handles Superior Court and State Court. Solicitor's Office just as State Court. Superior Court, the DA's office just as Superior Court, whereas we do, we do both. Then we also represent folks in magistrate court preliminary hearings, but that's really part of felony court as well. It's just that magistrate court will do a little portion of Superior Court. It's kind, I don't want to get into too much detail, but we also represent folks in, in magistrate court. So we just basically being able to keep our attorneys trained and skilled helps, helps tremendously. Like I said, I am asking for more staff. I think we need more support staff to help the attorneys because the attorneys can be in court if we have a lot of help outside to do a lot of things that the attorneys just really don't have the, the ability to do right now. And I'm really worried about when things do get back to what used to be normal and all the Superior Court judges can have jury trials at the same time. It's gonna get crazy because there are a lot of serious cases that are just kind of in the pipeline, waiting to be tried. And it's gonna be really busy.
Duly noted. I thank you for sharing that for the greater good, the greater county, and obviously for our own education as we go into this year's budget cycle. Thank you, Madam Public Defender. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Public Defender. Monica Miles. Thank you, Vice Chairman Robinson. Any other comments from the board? If not, we're gonna move on to our approval of the minutes. Board of Commissioners, just ask you to just be cognizant of the approval of our expenses tomorrow and then just be prepared to approve accordingly. Any discussion items, Board of Commissioners, before I call for executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just to the, to the greater good and to, to staff and obviously to, to my fellow commissioners. The, the goal here as we get into, you know, coming to the end of the year, it is to put forth legislation. You know, one of the roles of district commissioners is that we're the legislative body at the local level, like Congress, like the General Assembly. And from time to time, we put forth what we call local bills. And, and, and while bills are probably more known at, at the federal and state level, we do have things such as ordinances and policies that fall in the same category. For the most part, that in, those moments are brought up through staff, either through code, things need to be addressed, et cetera. But every now and then, we in our own authority can put forth legislation through an oversight process that we think is important. So this morning, I, I put forth probably the aggregation of legislation that we should be addressing, either in a reactive or in a proactive measure. I sent them to obviously our county clerk. And again, there is no formal process, which is another point. We, we're not formal, so this is more of a courtesy by me sitting at fourth. I mean, obviously any two commissioners can put something on the agenda, but the whole point is obviously just not to mature financially, but to mature legislatively, et cetera. So the goal would be to sort of So the goal would be to sort of, as I call it, to either create, um, to repeal, to, um, obviously abolish or, um, for the most part, amend anything in the following six categories, specifically procurement, um, finance, um, obviously, um, HOA, which has more to do with the code. Obviously, we want to deal with, um, committees, um, that I think are important, air B two Bs and, um, things that, you know, or anything else that our fellow commissioners believe, um, is important. Uh, those are sort of the key categories that we're going to put forth. Um, obviously, uh, I have Commissioner Carthen and Commissioner Mi- Mitchell, who have, um, agreed to join me, um, in this process. Uh, it is something that I believe, um, is, is important. Uh, specifically, they'll serve as either chairs or co-chairs or anyone knows provisions, so I'm not carrying all of these. Um, obviously, um, uh, obviously everybody gets to weigh in at some point. Um, as we did with our finance legislation last year, uh, when we put forth that policy. Obviously, there was some readings that we want to do publicly. I think it's important that the public is aware of what we're putting forth, especially when it comes to ordinance, because we may have to publish those in a newspaper in our legal organ. So obviously, um, there, there's a process regarding that. Uh, specifically one that I, I, I plan on championing, um, is the one dealing with compensation. Um, I think it's time. Um, and so in my legislation that I plan to chair, I'm going to put forth, um, um, a livable wage for all employees. Um, countywide, there are less than the minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour will be raised up to a minimum amount of roughly around thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, in addition, um, another provision that I'm putting forth for compensation is for, um, public safety. All pub safety, a, a, a member, a minimum of ten percent raise over a period of time, which the board will determine, a ten percent raise as relates to the, 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 the first person on, on deck in essence. In other words, those new entrants. Um, I think that's important. Um, you know, it, it's, it's great to, again, shiny objects. Uh, we, we're doing a great job. I mean, all we heard this morning, shiny objects. Um, and I appreciate the incentives that we do for vaccinations and things like that, but every now and then, but, but, and, and the mayor's said it, like the service delivery. Every now and then, we've got to acknowledge the people that are actually doing the work. I appreciate the reorganizations. I, I appreciate, um, obviously the other elected officials and people who are going to come before us looking for raises and everything during this year's constitutional retreat. But there's no way I'll consider anything without, at first, taking care of those people who are usually overlooked. Obviously, and bringing everybody up to a minimum wage and also taking care of those, um, individuals to, um, um, starting off in public safety. So that being said, Madam Chair, I just want to share those. This is just a pin. There's no action need to be taken. Obviously, more things will come out here soon. And with that being said, I yield the floor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That sounds great. All right. Any, any other, uh, remarks, Board of Commissioners, before we go into executive session? Board of Commissioners, it's my understanding to this morning, we have board appointments, real estate and litigation to discuss. Our county.
Madam Chair.
Do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, ma'am. You need to go into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you so much for talking to me. What, Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, any discussion or permissions, we have a motion and second. When I call you District, please respond accordingly, accordingly. District one. District one. District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
Okay, District one.
Yes.
Okay, Chairman, yes, we have a fable unanimous vote to, uh, to go into exec- executive session and the motion carries. All right, Board of Commissioners, uh, Lisa, you're, not Lisa, I'm sorry. Jennifer Moore, you'll take it from here. Our clerk, you are, um, covering this.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if you'll just hang on, um, actually Rick is inviting everybody to the breakout room now, so you should see something pop up on your screen. You just hit join.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, we're just going to go right into our, our executive session, if that's okay with you, without a break. Anyone, let me just ask you, anyone need a break? Okay, citizens, we will return momentarily. Okay, thank you so much, Sierra McColl. Uh, citizens of Douglas County, thank you again for your patience. Our executive session has ended again. This is September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And this, this is our work session and we are getting ready to close out. We just wanted to end with my usual. But before I do, want to yield to my, uh, fellow Board of Commissioners to see if there are any announcements uh, before our meeting tomorrow. Citizens, we do have our legislative meeting tomorrow. It will be held at six PM. And we, uh, look forward to everyone joining us. Am I correct, the county administrators, is it six PM or ten PM? Because I know we only have one meeting this month.
It is six PM tomorrow, Madam Chair.
Okay, I was correct. Okay, Board of Commissioners, uh, do you have any remarks or announcements for our citizens before I just closed out? Okay, being none, uh, but, uh, citizens of Douglas County, thank you so much. I just wanted to give you a quick update. We are at forty percent compliance, I should not say fully vaccinated here in Douglas County. And we're hoping to continue to see our numbers tick up. We do have September Saturday coming, this coming Saturday. We are looking at incentivizing our citizens with hun- one hundred dollar gift card. The first one hundred citizen that's available to take their vaccine will be, uh, met with a hundred dollar gift card. And then our next Saturday, uh, to follow, uh, we have the first two hundred citizens will receive a one hundred dollar gift card. So we're really excited about that. But meanwhile, I do ask that if you, uh, if, if you would just be aware of your surroundings when in public and continue to wear a mask when you're in, uh, in public, whether you're vaccinated or either non-vaccinated, it's very important as we still struggle with this clever, uh, Delta variant. Certainly, I ask that you continue to wash your hands repeatedly throughout the day and please watch your social distancing. Because I know it's very difficult. Sometimes we still are becoming very comfortable with one another, but this virus still has a shield in between us. So I ask if we can just remain cognizant and hopefully, I've been saying this for nineteen months now, that this two-shell pass, one day we'll look back on this and just see how resilient we are as one Douglas. Uh, Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before, uh, this Board of Commissioners or this body, this meeting is adjourned and I'll see you all tomorrow. So, so thank you. Have a good evening.